12 o'clock, we have a quorum. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is standing one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, welcome everyone to the August 5th, 2020 meeting. I'd like to, we have a quorum, Commissioner Piner may join, he may not. He's got a doctor visit today and as we know, when you get a doctor's visit today and you're feeling good, you better go ahead and move forward with it. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of July 15?
Commissioner Givens, so move.
Commissioner Mastmiano, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion carries. We will not do a financial report today with the loss of power yesterday. I don't believe the board was able to receive any of the financial information, so we'll hold that off until our next meeting to vote to approve the financial report and the payment of the bills. Okay, we are going to host a public hearing. It is now 12:02, we're going to have a public hearing on Resolution R 6 2020 Enterprise Zone. Lou, do you want to read that or how do you want to move forward with that?
I want Gene to explain it. The reason that the resolution includes additional area in Elton that we want to expand on our enterprise zone and it has to go, the application will go, the resolution will go with the application in Cecil County, but Gene can give you the best information on what that includes.
Are you looking for the properties that we're listing or the benefits of the enterprise zone?
Why don't you give a general summary of what this involves and what additional land areas involve too?
Okay. Chris Moyer is also on the, on the meeting. Chris, you're muted.
I see Chris is on, I also see Sandra Edwards is on.
Sandra is on too. And Chris, would you prefer to give the overview of the enterprise zone?
I'd prefer if Sandra did, actually.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that. You may already be aware, but an enterprise zone is, in essence, it's a economically depressed area that gets designated as an enterprise zone to encourage economic growth and job creation. The Cecil County Economic Enterprise Zone is a partnership with the state of Maryland and the towns, applicable towns within the county. And again, it's a joint effort to, of these local governments and the state to encourage new development and growth, specifically job growth. And the benefits that the landowners or developers receive are a real property income tax, or excuse me, real property tax credit and income tax credit for qualifying employees and qualifying improvements on properties. So it's really a designation of land for income-based economic growth. That's in a nutshell. Through, in the entire county, we have about, just shy of 7,200 acres designated as enterprise Each year, there's two times where our expansions will be considered by the state, the April 15th deadline and October 15th, of course, because of the pandemic, they're, what they basically did away with the April application round, so we're applying for an expansion for this fall. And that's, that's it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on enterprise zones in general or Cecil County's enterprise zone.
Thank you Sandy. We, we sent over a list of parcel descriptions and I think the process now is, do you guys review that list and then submit it to the county government?
Um, yes, we'll review them at the staff level, go over it with the administration and ultimately, we would have to take all of the properties proposed for expansion, Eltons and any others in the, in the county, and it would have to go to the county council ultimately for approval.
Okay, does anyone on the board have any questions or comments about Resolution R 6 2020 about expanding our enterprise zone? Okay, this is a public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Gene should comment on, she had listed 399 acres of additional land in Elton that being incorporated in here. I don't know if you could give a general description that would be informative to the public about where this, where these additional properties are located.
Thank you Lou.
Can you clarify that?
Um, yes, I have the documents, I don't have the map in front of me, hold on. So, the properties include some, three properties off of Warner Road and Bell Hill Road on the south side of 279. There's Price Automotive Property that's located at the very end of Warner Road. There's NAB Capital on Warner Road. And there's the former Bingo Truck Stop, which is at the intersection of Money Lane and Bell Hill Road. On south, there's property in South Side LLC for the, the part, it's known as Parcel I, there's two parcels there. Parcel 2371 and 169 that are part of the, the logistics warehouse proposed site. There's a parcel on Route 40, it's 28 acres, Parcel 2462 that's currently owned by Williams Family Auto. They have a second property that's a little bit smaller adjacent to it, which is 2.72 acres. And then the former Lidl property, the property where Lidl was supposed to go along Route 40, it's also Parcel 2462, Lot 1, that's four acres, that's also included in this. We have two properties, the Big Elk Mall on the north side of Route 40, that's 31 acres. And the Holly Hall site, the, it's owned by Big Elk Mall LLC, Parcel 2224, that's six acres, that site is also included. There's a property on Bridge Street, Parcel 1695, that's 2.67 acres owned by Anita Joyce Romanek and Joan Carol Hall. That's the property that's adjacent to the Laurel Wood. It currently has a single family home on it, but it's zoned commercial, it's ZNC2. And I think that's everything. Thought I had another one.
And Gene, for clarification to the public, all these are commercial properties?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So with that all being said, all these properties, right, which is however you want to determine, what criteria is someone going to come up to have finalists to receive whatever is necessary? Do I, do you follow me?
Uh, how do they benefit from the enterprise zone?
No, not, not benefit, how are you selected?
Um, we were looking at properties that have been languishing or are underdeveloped and have been underdeveloped for a while or undeveloped and have been undeveloped for a while. And we're hoping with the enterprise zone that the incentive, the tax incentives might spur development of those properties.
And because it, their real property tax incentive coupled with income tax incentives also for new employees that are, that get jobs on these properties once they're developed, that's a, that's a good incentive for a developer or a company to locate in these enterprise zones.
All right, so if, if I'm selected and, you know, I refuse it after going through whatever, 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 so what do you do? You find someone else to replace that individual organization or what have you?
It's optional. Sandra, I don't know if you wanted to address the, the question? Um, I'm not sure I understand the question fully, but like, it is optional, there has to be capital improvements made on the property in order to receive the real property tax credits. So, you know, obviously somebody, the current owner would have to, or have a developer, and then they'd have to hire employees and they have to meet a certain threshold, it's a certain 50%, they'd have to pay employees 150% at least of minimum wage and there's some other criteria in order to get the income tax credit, so. But the onus for the income tax credits is solely on the employer, they would fill out a form, the Maryland 500 CR form where they submit their income tax returns to get those.
I think you partially made me understand, thanks much.
Okay, thank you guys so much. Any other questions from the board?
Um, I don't have a question, I, I just, I do want to state for the record that I am also a partial, I have partial interest in the property on Bridge Street, the 2.76 acres. There's no commercial development on there as it should be, and I probably for that reason will recuse myself from voting.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you.
So noted. Okay, this is a public hearing. Do we have anyone that's in the audience that has any questions or comments in regards to this enterprise zone? So I have phone numbers that I see on the screen and I'm going to ask you if you have any interest in speaking. The first person would be phone number 49415.
No comment.
Thank you. The next one would be 419. No comment. Okay, the next one's on mute, which is a 9, no comment. And the next number is 3.
That's Dick Lemon. My only question is, this is not the first enterprise zone that's come up. Have we had, seen any action or any investors prior to, prior to this in other enterprise zones?
Yes, great question, Mr. Lemon, and Upper Chesapeake Corporate Center was an enterprise zone, is that, am I correct in my, and it's been very successful for the town of Elton and it continues to be thriving and be very successful.
Steve, do you know if Turumo's also participated?
Turumo Medical, and they're continually expanding using the enterprise zone, so it's been very beneficial for the town of Elton with the businesses that we've been able to attract.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Okay, it is now 12:14, we're going to close this public hearing. Okay, with the remainder of the board, I've got Commissioner Givens, Commissioner Mastmiano, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 6 2020 designation and expansion of the enterprise zone?
Commissioner Givens, so move.
Commissioner Givens, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So we have a motion that carries and I want to note it that Gene Brumel did not, she abstained from the voting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Okay, thank you Sandy and Chris for being on our call today. You can certainly stay home, we're not going to be much longer, but thank you.
Have a great day, thank you.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Thanks, Chris.
It's a partnership town, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lou, you're on.
Okay, the first item I have is Resolution R 7 2020. A little background on, the town had originally postponed the municipal elections that would normally be held in May because of the COVID-19 plague that we're currently experiencing. The board had voted at that point in time, or some point in time prior to May of this year, to postpone that until the COVID-19 plague had theoretically expired, however, there is no end in sight at this point in time when, when that will occur. Consequently, the board has made a decision to move forward with the, the election, municipal election. This resolution rescinds the prior election postponing it and establishes the date of September 15th for the municipal election to occur. And I believe Michelle Henson has worked with the Board of Supervisors of Elections to coordinate this election and will implement all the necessary health and measures in order to protect the public or the staff and the Board of Supervisors of Elections to conduct this election. So basically, the election is going to be held on, I think that's Tuesday, September 15th, and it's from, what, 8 o'clock till 200 hours or 8:00 PM?
From 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM.
Oh, 7:00 to 8:00 PM, I still use military time, sorry, but 8:00 PM. So I would ask the board to vote in favor of enacting Resolution R 7, rescinding the prior resolution and establishing the election for September 15th.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 2 2020 establishing the date of the municipal election?
I will so move.
Got a motion by Gene?
I'll second.
Second by Rob. Any discussion on the election date being September 15th? Hearing none, all in favor?
No, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
And it may have to do with the history of voting as far as time goes, what's the difference between 7:00 to 8:00 or 7:00 to 7:00? And I say that because not only have I ran for office before, but I've seen others run and I don't see that much change from 7:00 to 8:00 at night, I mean, it can stay, it's not a big issue, but basically it's just a question in that one hour.
I think the 7:00 to 8:00 is the timeframe established in the charter, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Actually establishing a charter for that timeframe.
Okay, no problem, I understand it now.
But, but Charlie, I agree with you, I actually mentioned, why don't we do it from 7:00 to 7:00, I kind of feel the same way, but we need to make a charter change and I'd be happy to make that too in the future.
Yeah, that takes quite a bit of time to do that, so we're a little bit short this time.
Yeah.
So I understand that, just a question, thank you much.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one I have is Resolution R 5 2020. Basically, this affects the food service establishments and restaurants and bars downtown. The board has previously adopted a resolution allowing outdoor seating for those, those businesses downtown, and we've allowed areas where parking normally would occur for outseating, outdoor seating. And those, those spaces continue to exist today and under the governor's latest order, he still allows for the reopening of businesses and facilities affecting food service and restaurants and bars and allows both outdoor seating and limited indoor seating. And I would, the board, would ask the board to enact the alcohol waiver requested by the Elton Alliance and extend the outdoor seating and the use of parking spaces on Main Street up to expiring, up to an expiring September 17th now. And we'll see at that next, when that date arrives whether it needs to be extended again, but this resolution extends it to September 17th for those businesses on Main Street.
We have a motion to approve Resolution R 5 2020.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that. Commissioner, Commissioner Givens, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that?
Yeah, the only discussion right now, there are only, I guess, two businesses that have, no, there's three that have outdoor seating, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
There's four.
Four.
There's four. I think there's four, yeah.
Oh, it is four with the cafe.
Okay, no problem. So if someone or a business wants to have outdoor seating, do they just do it, do they notify the town or the alliance that they're going to do that and in turn we find out? Just to know.
Well, the alcohol waiver was granted to the alliance for those businesses on Main Street.
I'm sorry Louis, I'm talking about the seating.
Oh, the seating? Well, the seating has been just provided for the areas in front of those businesses for the current period of time. If they want to expand on that, then they have to, the alliance would have to come to the board and ask for an ex, an expansion or extension of those spaces for that purpose. And I see Commissioner Piner's now on board.
Thank you, you answered my question.
Um, I have another question. So this resolution will expire on September 17th, which is the day after our last meeting in September. So should we want to extend it another month, we're going to have a two-week gap between that and our next meeting.
No, we'll bring it ahead of time.
You will bring it in, okay.
We'll bring it ahead of time so that doesn't happen.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on it that I've made before. I really think that it's a good thing for downtown to have these outdoor seedings. I'd like to see it become a permanent thing.
I'm loving what you're saying. Okay, hearing no more discussion, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R 5 2020?
So move, Earl Piner.
A second.
Mr. Mastmiano.
All right, no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I would like to make a comment based on Commissioner Mastmiano's comment about the possibility of extending outdoor seating on an affirmative basis. If we decided to do that, I would recommend that some of the infrastructure down there be modified for that purpose instead of just having the parking space, a curb in that line and all that, that we would have, re-engineer that area to allow for the sidewalk to be expanded out to a curb and narrow, narrow down the street. That would be, put a plateau, so to speak, in the area where that would occur rather than the way it's currently configured.
Louis?
Yes.
Um, the only concern I would have is when that business, if that business changes to a non-restaurant type business, you've then lost parking spaces on the street that wouldn't then be used anymore.
That's, that would be an issue.
And parking in the, in the winter would be, you know, close parking to the businesses when they're not sitting outside anymore would be important too.
Yeah, we could take it out then.
Oh, okay.
You know, there's an old saying I go by, all of us are smarter than any one of us. So having everyone on board and putting all the brain power together will come up with a solution that usually has a great deal of success.
Good thought.
Very good. Anything else, Lou?
That's it. The only thing I'd like to comment on is the Neighborhood Community Center quickly. The landscaper is there today, he'll probably be there a couple days putting in bushes, flowers, whatever, trees, whatever, and, and doing a lot of work on the exterior of that building, not the building, but the area for landscaping. The contractor is there putting the padding down, initial padding down on the gym floor, which will be the basis under which the basketball and volleyball courts will be established. And Vigilies is there putting in the cameras today. They had, they were short on some cameras and they're there today putting the cameras in, hopefully they'll get done today or tomorrow. So we'll have all the cameras for security purposes, gym floor is coming along, the landscaping is coming along, and when all that's done, Meadows will come in, put the final course of pavement down and stripe it and everything, and we'll be getting close to having that project completed.
Louis, how, how do we make out from the storm with the building?
I'm sorry?
How did the recreation building make out from the storm? Is any damage?
It's completely waterproof, we found out, which is good, none of the, none of the building was damaged or anything. And one of the things I wanted to look at most carefully was the stormwater runoff and all the infiltration trenches and stormwater trenches and all the other stuff there worked, worked pretty well. The only thing I was a little bit concerned about was Stockton Street was underwater for a while, but I think we had so many streets underwater in Elton that that really wasn't an anomaly, so to speak, with respect to that project.
Thanks, that's good news to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
That's it for me.
Okay, of course, I just wanted to report that I think we all talked about the rainfall that we had yesterday, we're not sure if we had six, seven, eight, nine, or 10 inches. I know that some of the, the rain gauges were up to 10 inches in the area, but we had a lot of rain in a short period of time. And I have to say, this was the second highest level that I've seen, in the back here, since 1994, and it was definitely the second highest I've seen it, and it was darn close to being the highest and, and that amount of water came down in a shorter period of time than it did with Hurricane Floyd. And I have to tell you, I want to really go out and say to Dan Hanley and the Public Works crew, I loved your proactive thinking about cleaning those storm drains. I think that that should be a check on the box for all future storms that are coming. You guys did a great job of forward-thinking, getting them cleaned out, because I can tell you, if they weren't cleaned out with that amount of rainfall and as bad as the streets were clean, were flooding, it would have been a total nightmare in areas above and beyond what we did have. So thank you for that and thank you for going above and.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
And saying on that, you know, we, we, we do a lot for our downtown community and I, I've already been seeing some social media posts that maybe we're not doing enough and it just, sometimes I just, we've been less than 12 hours from the storm, but I know we're cleaning the parking lot, the municipal parking lot behind, I would say behind where Spork is, behind Tide Water Tattoo, behind the theater. There's a little alleyway there that I think needs to, we probably need to go up to the properties and start up there and push that mud and silt down. I think currently we're like in the middle of the parking lot doing work, but let's help those business owners the best we can and get some of that.
That would help a lot, Rob.
Could you help with that, Dan, with, since you got that hose out there?
Yeah, we'll look into it, yes, sir.
Okay, I, I know there's already been some reports that we're not helping and I, I don't think that they, maybe they asked, but I think we need to help those businesses down through there, even all the way down to Elton Forest if we can help. I know we got a lot of work that we got to get to, no question about that, but we've got that power hose there, we might be able to help them. Other than that, I have nothing else to report. Commissioner Brumel, anything?
No, uh, no, just shout out thank you to all the first responders, our, our Public Works and our Police Department for all the great work they've been doing.
Thank you. Commissioner Piner?
Yes, how, how's everybody doing? Hey, listen, I had a couple concerns about, I know we have soccer going on, all that stuff for this recreation side. I want to first of all thank Mary McGaw and Public Work for getting those basketball courts up for us, but there was concerns because there was groups of people like AAU players and all that, basketball players going to Delaware and going all the places, they, they didn't have any place for them to work out into their one-on-one sessions or whatever. So Marina Park did it, the weather the storm did it, Marina Park?
Yes, it weathered, yes.
Okay, so the, my, my point I'm making is, is there any way we can resurface that blacktop there? Because these kids don't have any place, they can't put the basketballs on the streets, they can't do this, we got to at least have someplace for them to be able to go to and at least work out one-on-one, two-on-two. one-on-one, two-on-two, whatever. Um, I would like to see that, that, uh, blacktop resurfaced. I would even like to, well, I don't want the one down either park, I mean, not either park, other park done, we can see where that would have happened. But anyway, if we can do something to the Marina Park, I, I would really appreciate that, uh, as, as part of the board.
Thank you Earl. Mr. Givens?
Um, first of all, the young lady named Caroline Parker came in this morning to pick up her scholarship check, she came with her mother. I had a picture taken of her receiving the check, and I will send you a picture of both she and the other gentleman named Rod Strickland, who I took his picture and he received the check. You receive the background academic information about him, but I just only think it's right that the board see who these graduates are of Elton High School. Uh, as far as the basketball court goes, Earl, I, I agree with you, there was a basketball team down there the other night, which was Monday night, and the asphalt on the floor is basically unsafe, and it needs to be, um, taken care of whenever we have the money, the finances and the what with all to take care of that. So I, I agree with you there, because that actually is the only place that the kids can go and play. Dan, uh, I know you're on the line, and I know there'd be a lot of trees to be shriveled up in the truck, so I'm quite sure that your men will be behind in that, whereas if you look for them on Thursday this week, you may not see them until Thursday the next week because of so much. Is that correct?
We're ready for them, we're ready.
Oh, you are, so, all right, just wanted to let you know that.
When they come out, we got people patrolling, we'll make it happen.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you Charlie. Commissioner Massmiano?
I got a couple things, I've been kinda busy downtown, I met with Margie Blystone from the Elton Alliance, we met with Dan Hanley from Public Works, um, and the other gentleman, Dan, I forget his name.
Brian, Brian McQueen.
Brian, yes, I'm sorry, uh, but that project is underway, um, Dan and his guys are in the process of cleaning up the farmer's market roof, then we're gonna stay in the polls, gonna be very nice. Uh, I met with Ed from Public Works about the gateway, and we discussed designs, uh, he's working on that, I'm really excited to see that done, he's gonna put it at the top of the stairs like we, like we talked about. And on that subject, the stairway there, those wide concrete steps have all of a sudden become a very popular hangout for people that we really don't want hanging out in there, and there is food and trash everywhere. I had to call EPD last week on some people, and they stopped into the shop and told me that they had taken those people with them, because they had all kinds of stuff, and anyway, that, the stairway is becoming a problem. I don't know quite what we want to do about it, but I think we should do something about it with our gateways that say "Welcome to Elton," and there's people sleeping in there and drinking in there and leaving all kinds of trash. The last thing on my list is I got a email, um, the commissioner's email from one of our citizens, I, I should have had his name with me, it might have been Joe, and he was suggesting that we put a kayak ramp in by the, uh, farmer's market. Um, I think a second kayak ramp would be a nice thing if we could swing it. Uh, the one down at Marina Park is a beautiful ramp, I've used it a few times, I had no problem parking back there, I know people have voiced their concerns about parking back there, but I assured him that I had no trouble, but he insisted him and his friends don't want to do it. I think a second ramp would be a good idea for us, place to put in and a place to pull out down at Marina Park, you can just float down with the current. Uh, that would make our creek much more enjoyable, if that's in our cards. And that's all I have.
Thank you Rob. Okay, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor for anyone who has anything for the good of the town of Elton. I'll go right through the phone numbers again, uh, phone number?
Uh, just kudos to Dan and his crew because of town, I've been out and about a little bit this morning, and a lot of the stuff I saw yesterday has already been cleaned up, so thanks a lot to Dan and his crew.
Thank you. Phone number 4419. It's on mute, okay, we'll go to the next one, 7215. On mute, nothing new to report. Uh, Mr. Lemon at 1011.
Guess what, I have some follow-up questions.
Fantastic.
No surprise there, I'm sure. By the way, in the Wilmington Journal this morning, they said at the Newcastle County Airport, they had 4.5 inches of rain. And, uh, just, just a comment, you were talking about how much rain.
Thank you.
It was a lot, that's for sure. What, what is the date of the next meeting?
We, we are having a workshop next Wednesday, is that correct Michelle?
Yes.
A workshop, okay.
Uh, it'll be a Zoom workshop, yep, on August the 12th.
Okay, um, and then, okay, uh, these are follow-up questions. Uh, the status of Route, uh, Gene Miners following this, uh, the status of the, uh, with the state roads on what we're doing on Route 213 to make it better?
Uh, the status of state roads, State Highway Administration's review of the traffic impact study done by, um, Southfields, is that the one?
I don't know, uh, which one is what, but, uh, I know in a prior meeting, the mayor suggested that you update us at each meeting, uh, uh, on the progress of making, uh, everybody that came in, uh, about the, the new development, uh, complained about traffic and the, and the future of traffic on Route 213, and, uh, Earl said, uh, that that had to be done before anything else would happen, so that's, that's why I keep following up on it, to see if we're pushing that to, to get the state to do something.
So, um, what is happening with the, the PUD is, uh, the first section of the PUD is Parcel I, um, and that is the Logistics Warehouse site. Um, and any comments regarding the impacts of that will be addressed first, uh, as that's moving along, and then as each section comes in, each subsequent section comes in for the PUD, then they'll address, uh, the traffic impacts, uh, to those sections as they come in. And from what I understand, um, they're working on that now, they should be coming in in September or October with, uh, Parcel I, which is the Logistics Warehouse.
Gene, very, it's muted. I'm sorry, Gene?
Yes?
The Parcel Y will be, have no effect on 213, will it? That's only Route 40.
Correct.
Good.
Um.
Well, I was, I ju, I was gonna state that, uh, there hasn't been anything new to the planning board for us to really report for two meetings with the Southfields project.
Correct, I think they're coming in in September or October.
So we'll have more to report on that soon, Mr. Lemon.
Okay, um, I wanted to ask, uh, I saw in the, uh, on the website that you're looking for a police chief, maybe you could bring me up to date on that?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, uh, Matt Donnelly, uh, he served the town of Elton for 31 years and served as the Acting Chief of Police for probably two or three years, and then now he's been the Chief of Police for the last five or six years. Has decided to retire from, uh, the policing business, uh, so his effective last day is August 31st. Uh, so we have, uh, moved forward and, uh, we have appointed Acting Police Chief Joe Zerillo as in the acting position. I believe that, uh, Louis George has talked to, uh, Acting Chief Zerillo, and, uh, I don't believe he has any interest of moving forward with that chief position. So we have decided to advertise for that position, and, uh, I think as of right now, I think we've got three applications that have came into Town Hall, uh, but, uh, applications are being accepted through, I believe, August 20-something. I'm trying to think of the date, I don't have it here in front of me, but I believe it's like August 21st, we're holding, uh, applications for the position. And, uh, at that point, uh, Lou George will make a decision and recommendation to the board to take a look at these, and, uh, we as a team will, uh, find our new chief police.
I'm surprised Mr. Zerillo isn't interested in the job, he'd be a good candidate.
He'd be a great candidate, and I think just the ever-changing times of policing has really, we've lost several officers over the last, uh, several weeks that have decided to maybe look at new professions.
Well, and I can understand that, so as that gets back to the question that, uh, I keep asking is, uh, are we looking for more policemen? Because it takes, takes about a year to get somebody in place, the way I understand it.
We have, and, and Lou has authorized moving forward with, uh, three officers?
Yes.
Yep, thank you Mr. Lemon, anything else?
Oh yeah, I've got plenty more.
All right.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Where do we, where do we stand on the armory as far as the purchase?
Uh, probably, uh, I'm sorry, Mayor. I said you have to comment on that one. Probably, uh, another few months, it hadn't went to the Board of Public Works, uh, the Board of Public Works in Maryland consists of the Governor, the Comptroller, and the Treasurer, who have to approve the sale of the armory, and it goes through the Department of General Services. Uh, there's a, uh, there's a process by which that happens, and it hasn't happened yet, but once the Board of Public Works approves the sale, then bingo, it probably a month or two or so after that, we'll go to settlement. But, uh, things are moving along, and we have an attorney, uh, I don't know if Attorney Downs wants to comment on it or not, but, uh, there's some issues with the title yet, they have to be cleared up and a couple other small items. John, do you have any comment on that, or? Is he there?
Yes, I'm asking him to unmute his phone. There he is.
Yes, there we are. Yes, we are, uh, the, the couple title issues that have come up are nothing of any consequence, uh, nothing that's holding us back or delaying anything, it's just the state process of review and that sort of thing that just takes a considerable amount of time, and, uh, this is not, selling the armory is something they want to do, uh, but it's, it's not their highest priority, as you can imagine.
Also, some of the people I'm dealing with, uh, with the General Services and the Maryland Historical Trust are working from home also, so there's a lot of state employees that work from their homes, and I'm not sure if that's an impediment to the, how quickly this process moves, but I assume that even the, uh, some of the attorneys involved are not actually working on the job site, so to speak, but through their homes, and, uh, so that holds things up. But I'm looking at probably fall that will own the armory.
Well, it sounds like a very good report. Uh, do, do you still think the, uh, fire people from, uh, Frederick County will come down and set their offices up there?
No, they're not, uh, they're not eligible to set up in there.
Oh, I thought that was, uh, gonna happen, that's not gonna happen.
That was their request, but we requested money, uh, grant money, uh, to supplement the cost of this project based on a community, uh, use of that building, not for private use by the, uh, fire people, so it, they're not involved in it.
Okay, so that's a dead issue, okay?
Dead issue.
Okay, next question. Where do we stand on the, uh, uh, smart meters and the water study that, uh, we, I think we paid $19,000 to have these guys set it up so it would operate, uh, well?
The, the, we're not installing meters inside homes at this point in time as part of our AMI program because of the COVID situation. As soon as that's paired up, then we'll, we'll do that.
I'm interrupting you again, but the, uh, the, the thing of it is, they, they were gonna do a study and set it up so that, um, uh, we would be more or less automated out of the, uh, Controller's Office, is that still in, in a working process, or what, what's going on?
I'm not sure, which, the meters are not, are read, but they're not read from the Finance Department yet. There, there's no, uh, infrastructure in place for the Finance Department to, to remotely read meters.
Okay. Is that in the plans?
In the plan, it is in the plan, but it's, uh, might be, uh, impaired by the COVID plague that we're in right now.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's good on that. What else do I have here? Where do we stand on the, uh, this is a question I keep asking, where do we stand on the pedestrian bridges for, over on Delaware Avenue?
Let me tell you, I've been thoroughly disappointed in you if you hadn't asked me that question. He's gonna ask me about the pedestrian bridge next to Delaware Avenue.
I know what you're saying, there's the broken record again.
No, it's not a broken record, it's, it's a valid, uh, question, and it's a valid, uh, reason we want it, but the state highway is, uh, some, I don't know if it's because of their plague or the plague that's affecting them or whatever and everybody, but, uh, that's still in the, only in the planning stage at this time, and it's currently in their, in their planning, uh, but that's it.
I think they had the plague before the plague, anyway.
They have.
Anyway, the only other thing to say is that, uh, I echo what was said, congratulate Dan on doing a very good job, and, uh, thank you for, uh, letting me speak at the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon.
Okay, uh, nothing else, uh, on this meeting?
One other thing Mayor, one other thing, uh, basically, excuse me, but I never saw the policeman announcement, so when is the deadline for that position to, uh, put application?
I got it here in front of me, bear with me. I don't have the ad in front of me, I. Okay, the application, uh, says that the September 4th, 2020 is the filing deadline, if I'm reading that correctly, is that correct Lou? That sounds, that might be it, yes. Yeah, that's correct, so application. It's a Friday, the 4th, I think, I'm looking at my calendar. Actually, there is no filing deadline, the position will remain open until filled, but the priority screening date is September 4th, 2020.
No prob, no problem, thank you much, I just didn't see that.
The reason we have it that way is because of the candidates that we receive as of September 4th, uh, they're not suitable candidates, and we don't feel they're suitable candidates, we're not gonna close out, close it out at that point, we'll continue and we'll re-advertise again.
That makes sense.
Kinda keep it open.
That makes sense.
Go ahead Gene. One question on that, um, I don't have the application in front of me by no means, but are we requiring them to go through the FBI, um, training course for something?
One of the candidates, uh, I mean, all the candidates, ironically, the ones we have have all been through the FBI National Academy, which is, uh, Matt Donnelly, Joe Zerillo, and Larry Waldridge have all been through the FBI National Academy, because they're, they're considered command-level police officers. We would require them, uh, any command-level officer that will come in as a chief to have at least went through that, and believe it, it's pretty common for command-level police officers to go through the FBI National Academy.
Okay, I was just curious, 'cause if I'm not mistaken, several of our past chiefs might not have had that certification, but, um.
Our last chief before, uh, Bill Ryan before, um, Matt, he was an FBI, uh, National Academy person too, so we basically adopted that, that thing, 'cause that's a good, uh, good school to go to.
Hey, Mayor Earl, I have, Mayor Earl, I have one more comment.
Yes sir Earl.
Dan, Dan, uh, if, if you could, there's, uh, some potholes right by McDonald's on the corner of Route 40 and Bridge Street, someone just threw a slab of, uh, black asphalt there, and it's so dang on bumpy, rocky, even if you're going slow, you're, 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 you're damaging your, your vehicle. Could you go take a look at that at the corner of McDonald's and Route 40 and Bridge Street?
It's, it's. They're both state highway routes, but I'll, I'll report to state highway.
Well, they, they need to fix that, 'cause it, it's a mess. But anyway, that's all I have to say.
Mayor, could I add one thing?
Go ahead Gene.
I apologize, I, I should have put a map up for, for the public hearing that I was having trouble locating.
having trouble locating, and I located it now, but I would need to share, have screen sharing, do I have screen sharing ability, Michelle?
You should have. You should have, but we don't need it now.
Okay, so you don't want to, okay.
There, there was no one from the public that even commented about the enterprise.
Okay. I can send you all the map just to, for your.
I think that would be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.